All right, I'm gonna read opening housekeeping. 10:35, this is a public meeting and it's being recorded. So anything said verbally, anything viewed via webcam, or anything typed in the chat box will become part of the recording. Please mute when not speaking. If you're trying to speak and you're unable to, maybe press star six on your phone, we'll monitor the questions. And because it's a telephonic meeting, please identify yourself before stating your remarks. So thank you for your participation and your patience. All right, Dr. Bradley?
All right, good morning, everyone. We will go ahead and call the order at 9:03. Shelley, if you can proceed with roll call, please.
Amber Rice.
Here, Shelley.
Dan State. Franco Castro-Marin.
Here.
I see you, Frank. Dale Bradley.
Present.
Here.
Eve Godtaker. Jason Johnson.
Here.
Josh Gaither.
I'm here.
Julie Agansey.
Here.
Kevin Foster. Michelle Preston. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. I count seven, we have four.
All right, excellent, thank you very much, Shelley. All right, well, next on the agenda, we are gonna go ahead to our discussion and action items. The first one will be a presentation by Dr. Gaither regarding a pilot project proposal for ultrasound-guided IV to be added to scope of practice as a STR. Just to give a little bit of background for those of you who may be, may not be familiar with the process, the goal with the pilot project is to have MDC act as an advisory body to the director of ADHS, who ultimately makes a determination about whether or not a pilot project will be accepted. The reason for this special session today is due to the nursing shortage throughout the hospital system across Arizona and the United States. We've had a number of different hospitals come and request that this be added to scope of practice for paramedics. And so this is why we wanted to bring together this special session. So I'll go ahead and ask for a motion to open the first discussion and action item.
So moved, Frank Walter.
Thank you, Frank.
This is Amber, I'll second.
Thank you, Amber. All right. I will go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Gaither.
It would help if I unmuted myself. Thank you, Dr. Bradley. This is actually very quick on purpose. I think all of you are quite aware of ultrasound use for the placement of IVs. So let me give a brief background on this proposed pilot project, and then I'll run through some details quickly, and then, of course, open it up to any questions. So the request is to do a pilot program which would evaluate the ability of paramedics working in hospitals, important there, in a hospital setting, not in the field setting, to use ultrasound for the placement of peripheral IVs in those patients who are difficult to place normal peripheral IVs using standard techniques. So our target population are patients who cannot have an IV placed normally, and ultrasound would be used to facilitate that IV placement. A little bit of background on this. Paramedics have been placing ultrasound-guided IVs across the country for the last decade or so. Published success rates for paramedic placement of peripheral ultrasound-guided IVs ranges between 70 and 90%. And there is variation based on how the patients are identified. Many programs require three attempts at a peripheral IV prior to ultrasound-guided placement. Those programs have lower success rates. Their patients are more difficult to place them than other programs where ultrasound-guided IV may be the primary attempt in a patient known to have difficult IV access. Similarly, literature has demonstrated that there are few complications with ultrasound-guided IV placements. Those complications are similar to peripheral IV placements. The most common side effects or complications being hematoma formation at the site of IV insertion. Of course, we are all concerned about arterial puncture in this population. That is an incredibly rare complication. And interestingly enough, the rate is similar to that seen in peripheral IV insertion. Why would we be interested in doing this? It is actually better for our patients. Literature is quite clear in that ultrasound-guided IV placement reduces the rate of central line placement in patients with non-critical illness in the emergency department and hospital setting. That's kind of the background for this one. Let me tell you a little bit about the proposed pilot study. So the proposed pilot would include paramedics practicing in the hospital setting at facilities that have agreed to participate in this pilot program. In order to participate, I am requiring a letter of support to the University of Arizona from the facility EMS medical director stating that they will ensure paramedics receive an hour of didactic training on peripheral IV insertion using ultrasound-guided techniques, as well as competency testing. I'm leaving it up to each facility to determine what that competency testing is. But at most facilities, this includes 10 directly observed successful ultrasound-guided IV insertions. All of the operations of this pilot program will be left to the medical director and management teams at the facility. The University of Arizona, through our group, will only be involved in collection of the quality improvement data and reporting on those quality improvement metrics. In order to do that, myself and Dr. Josie Akuna, who I may have joined us here today. Dr. Akuna is one of our ultrasound faculty who specializes in ultrasound. Together, we've developed a REDCAP-based survey, which will be used to collect quality improvement data. What we will do is place a QR code, or I should say, request that every participating facility place a QR code on their ultrasound machine. That after placement of the ultrasound-guided IV, the paramedic stands the QR code. The QR code links to a REDCAP data collection tool, which includes several data collection points. If anyone's interested, I'm happy to share my screen and show you that data. Actually, I shouldn't say that, I don't actually know if technically I can. It's a web-based tool, so I may not even be able to share it with you. Let's leave it at that. It's a REDCAP-based survey. The REDCAP survey asks a series of questions for each medic. The first question is, was the ultrasound successfully placed? The second question is, how many attempts did you make at placement? The third question is, which of the following complications, if any, were observed? None, hematoma formation, arterial puncture, nerve, I think it's, I think its phrase is peripheral nerve palsy, which we describe as numbness or tingling in a nerve distribution. And that ends the survey, we don't collect any other data. It's very important to note for this survey, this is not intended to be a research study. This is a quality improvement project. And we do not intend to report on this in any type of research-based presentation. This is quality improvement data only. So I think I've talked a lot. Hopefully, that was succinct and clear enough for everyone. I'm happy to answer any questions or clear up any blanks I left.
Thank you, Josh. All right, I will go ahead and open up to any questions or comments regarding the pilot project submission. Thank you very much, Shelley. She has distributed all of those documents electronically ahead of the meeting, and those were in the meeting invite if anyone wanted to look at those specific documents. We're also happy to bring up any of the specific attachments if you would like as well. So, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, this is Frank. Two quick questions, Josh. One, what, you know, when you ask the number of attempts, how is that, you know, is that clearly defined? Is it, you know, having to come out and reinsert the needle, or how's that work? Because obviously, we're all gonna make adjustments while we're putting it in.
Absolutely, so a definition of attempt is puncture of the skin. So at the top of the REDCAP survey, it states, how many attempts did you make? Parenthesis, punctures, times the IV catheter punctured the skin. So it defines that in the REDCAP survey.
Okay, great, thank you.
Absolutely.
And then, in terms of the peripheral nerve effect, you know, somebody might get a transient zinger that comes and goes. So are you asking just for that, or are you asking for a persistent numbness or tingling?
Persistent numbness and tingling.
Okay, great, that's all the questions I have, thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
Yeah, thank you, great clarification questions.
Josh, this is Franco up in Scottsdale. What is the ultimate deliverable? How does this process translate into a potential exploration for change in scope of practice in Arizona?
Thank you for the question. In my letter, I believe that is attached to the agenda items, one of the, I should say, offers and questions for this group was on deliverables. We are very happy to report back to MDC on a quarterly, biannually, or annual basis the findings of this quality improvement project. I, of course, will defer to the DHS to provide direction on how we report the results of the quality improvement project back out to the group. In terms of ultimate goals, of course, this would, if successful, support adding peripheral IV insertion using ultrasound guidance as an STR to the Arizona scope of practice. That would be my personal goal.
And would there be a, is there a sensible time horizon for that?
I would defer to the wisdom of the group, and particularly the DHS, as to how long the pilot would run. I would request that we allow the pilot to run until a decision has been made to either add it to the scope of practice or remove it from the scope of practice, and that change has been made. But that makes sense.
And just to clarify your question, Franco, are you, were you asking in regards to the length of time for the pilot or the length of time for scope of practice to potentially be adjusted?
Just at least some kind of estimate in terms of, you know, if there's any precedent or anything like that that would give us some idea, is this a five-year thing? Is it a six-month thing? Is it a one-year, at least some ballpark?
The next item for discussion on the agenda is kind of a discussion on scope of practice in general, where we can get into a little bit more information. We don't have any confirmed dates or idea about whether or not scope of practice could get reopened or how long that process would take. So in regards to the pilot, I think it sounds like Josh is requesting that it stay open until either the pilot scope gets approved or not approved to continue with ultrasound-guided IVs as STR. In regards to general scope of practice, again, that's outside of our hands right now at the Bureau. But to give some context, previous pilots at the Bureau have not necessarily had end dates. So this is something that would not be out of line in that regard.
And I'll add maybe some color to that, Dr. Bradley. We have been placing ultrasound-guided IVs in our emergency department for many years now. We have used this quality improvement tool very successfully and had very little resistance to nursing use of that tool. They fill it out routinely with every placement, and they've been doing that for five to six years. So I don't anticipate any degradation in our ability to obtain quality improvement data should the pilot go on for longer than six months a year.
Hi, it's Brian.
Go ahead, Brian.
Hopefully, a quick question. So for the purposes of the pilot, this is in hospital only. But the request would eventually be that this is added to the general scope of practice at whatever appropriate time, and it would not delineate in the scope of practice that it is only in hospital at that time. Would that be correct?
I think that this pilot is specific to your first question, to the in-hospital setting. That's how the pilot proposal was submitted. In regards to the scope of practice, we don't have a delineation on our current Arizona scope of practice for in-hospital versus out-of-hospital. So certainly, however, the committee's requests that go through the process once we do get approval to open scope of practice again. That would be up to the committee's decision to discuss at that time.
Okay, I just, you know, I've expressed this concern during the, the scope of practice on table two concerning the split between practicing in a hospital. And I think that could have a detrimental effect at some point in time if this continues, particularly with the scope of practice. Just to keep in mind for the future, that there may be some inclination with increased scope of practice and abilities to do things in the hospital that that could move paramedics out of the field, and there's already a huge shortage. So now that I have any opposition to it necessarily becoming generalized, but the concept of splitting the things up is somewhat disconcerting to me.
Definitely something we do need to consider at that time. At this point, that would not even be on the table for discussion. So right now, the only point for discussion would be the STR specific to the hospital setting. Thank you, Dr. Walter, I see, I know you had a meeting conflict that starts at 10:00. So I know you will need to drop off before then.
Dr. Bradley, this is Bruce Horwood. Is this open to the public to ask a question?
Yes, absolutely, go ahead.
All right, this is Bruce Horwood from Valleywise, I think this is a great idea. The quick question I had is the location of the IVs. Obviously, our nurses do a lot of peripherals with the ultrasound, but our residents do a little bit more aggressive and do deep brachials. Would we be doing this superficial here, or are we gonna teach them how to do deep brachials and such?
For this pilot, we're restricting it to peripheral IV insertion. We generally leave deep brachial and other midline or pick line type of IV insertions up to individuals who have specific training on inserting those types of lines.
Great, I just wanted to know, because some people consider that the deep brachials and midlines is peripherals, and so I just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. I see a question in the chat from Merlin Curry in regards to was there a reason it was limited to the hospital setting? That is, how the pilot project proposal was submitted was specific to the hospital setting. So that's really up to the individual that submits a pilot proposal. They can decide the setting they would like to submit this. All right, if I don't hear any further questions, we will go ahead and take a vote. I will start with the nays. Is there anyone opposed to adding ultrasound-guided IV to scope of practice as a STR for paramedics? Please say nay or put that in the chat. All right, hearing none, any abstentions? All those in favor, if we can just do a, maybe in the chat, if you can just put a yea if you are in favor of this. And I know there's a couple of you on the phone, so anyone who's on the phone only, if you'd like to unmute.
This is Jason, yea.
Thank you, Jason. All right, so so far, I see three votes in the chat, four votes to, four yays. Jason on the phone, that's five. Dr. Foster, yea as well, and I think, Josh, are you abstaining?
Yeah, I'll abstain only because it's my project, of course I support it.
Thank you. All right. It looks like the, everyone was in favor of that, so we will go ahead and approve the pilot as a recommendation. Again, this is recommended from MDC to the director. So this will go to the director of ADHS for further review and final decision. All right, thank you very much, Josh. And next is a discussion on scope of practice. I know this kind of follows a little bit of the conversation we've been having. If I can call on Chief Garcia, who can give an update on that part.
All right, good morning, Dr. Bradley and commission members. Thanks again to the Medical Direction Commission for convening for this special session this morning. We appreciate you taking the time. As you all know, on January 20th, MDC convened and approved Amending Table 5.1 EMCT Scope of Practice to include ultrasound-guided IV as an STR for paramedics, as well as venous blood sampling as a STR for EMTs. The Bureau recognizes how important and urgent the request is to update scope of practice. At this time, the department does not have any updates regarding scope of practice. As of this morning, the department has not received an exception for exempt rulemaking to update scope. And while we currently don't have approval for exempt rule writing and anticipate it may take a while for a scope of practice update, the request for a pilot project to allow ultrasound-guided IV will be considered by the department in the interim. I just want to say thank you for your time, and we will get moving on this pilot request as soon as possible. I'll send it back to you, Dr. Bradley, is there any questions?
Thank you, any questions for Chief Garcia? All right, next on the agenda is a discussion, not an action item, but we wanted to bring forward discussion on a surge plan in regards to some of the things we've been hearing across the state. We recognize as the COVID pandemic has continued, we are in a different scenario now than we were, I think, in the first and second waves, where we really are having a lot of shortages of hospital staffing. And this ultimately has a trickle-down effect that affects the EMS system. We've heard from all parts of the state that offload times have been a challenge. This results in units being out of service, which delays 911 response, as well as a inter-facility response as well. And so we have been working with different stakeholder groups to see what the Bureau can support in regards to the offload process and the overall system. One of the best practices that was presented at the EMS council meeting in January by the Southern Arizona Group was in the process that they put into place to really standardize which patients could potentially go to triage, as well as an escalation process. This was done with quite a bit of stakeholder input, and I think it's, it sounds like it's been quite successful in twofold. One, helping to start decreasing the offload times, but also improving kind of relationships between EMS and staff in the hospital, knowing that they have a set process and how to escalate this. What is, what Shelley is presenting right now is the process that was put into place by Southern Arizona, specifically Pima County. One of the things from a follow-up meeting they had this week was a request that I think they were gonna add to the yellow section, behavioral health patients, recognizing that those patients, even if they're stable, may not be the best patient from a safety perspective to go to a waiting room or triage area. The other thing that we have been working on regionally, in the central region, is a process to work with EMS and hospital stakeholders on two separate things. The first one is in regards to helping to facilitate inter-facility transports, and what are some things that we do to work on that? That group has met once as a subgroup this week after a follow-up meeting, and I appreciate everyone's participation in that one. The other one that we are meeting tomorrow with some stakeholders is to look at, trying to put forward some type of offload process in Maricopa County as well, and hoping to get them buying for some consistency too. So I wanted to bring those pieces forward and just get input from this committee. I think all of you are really important representatives from the, appointed by the governor and represent the state of Arizona's EMS system. So I will open it up to discussion and go from there. I don't know, Dr. Rice, or Walter, or Gaither, I know you have been involved and worked in Southern Arizona since this process has gone live in Pima County. I don't know if you wanted to add anything beyond my high-level summary of how this has been working and received by both EMS and the hospitals?
Sure. Hey, Dale, it's Amber. I know for my agency, there was some pretty significant delays in offloads, and we still have a couple of cases that sort of fall outside that recommended offload time. But I think since instituting this, we have seen significant improvements in our EMS offload times, particularly for those, those really, really long offloads that were, are becoming very problematic for our district. So there have been improvements, I think that it has helped, and I think that the hospitals do appreciate the feedback that we're able to give them. So some of the, the data that we're providing the hospitals about their offload times, I think, is helping them to, to guide their processes internally as well.
Dr. Bradley, I would just add, I think one of the benefits on the EMS side, because all of us work with our field providers, is really helping our paramedics to understand a new standard of care. We had great variation in paramedic individual practice, just like we see for all physicians in the emergency department. Some of our paramedics were very uncomfortable sending a 35-year-old with chest pain to the lobby, whereas others were very comfortable with that. So by clearly defining which patients fit into a green waiting room category, our paramedics actually felt a good bit more comfortable with the care they were providing for these individuals. A lot of kind of reassurance more than anything.
Thank you, Josh. I think anytime we can standardize processes across the board, whether in the hospital, prehospital setting, you certainly increase safety when you have a set standard. One of the other things that we've heard from a number of our ambulance providers in the state as well is that they, they feel there is an opportunity to help increase the number of pre-scheduled transports, as this is something that they know in other parts of the country really does make more available units during the day. And so that is being discussed right now between, at least in Maricopa County, with the ambulance providers and the hospital systems. And so they are working on putting together kind of a general description and some type of infographic that we could distribute to help delineate what patients may fall into that bucket, recognizing that even if we increase by 5% the number of patients that are pre-scheduled for their inter-facility transfer, that that overall helps the system. So we really wanted to take this opportunity to get feedback from this commission about some processes that you may be doing in your part of the state, or get any feedback if there's something you would like to support as MDC moving forward.
I had a quick question either for Josh or Amber regarding the Pima County green one, requiring nasal cannula oxygen going to the waiting room. Just trying to clarify in my own mind how that's operationalized. Would they keep the, you know, the EMS oxygen canister? Would, does the hospital rig that up with them? You know, because most waiting rooms don't have wall oxygen. So I just wondered how that's getting operationalized, just curious.
Yeah, so it's at the ER level. So this one came from the hospital-based medical directors, basically saying that, well, they, in the past, would never have put someone on oxygen in the lobby. Now they're, people that are walking into the lobby are requiring oxygen, and they're being placed on oxygen to sit out in the lobby and wait. And so they felt comfortable doing that with EMS patients as well, as long as that's all that they were requiring at the time. So it really just came from them saying, this is kind of what we're already doing for walk-ins, so we'd be comfortable putting that on the list for the prehospital providers as well.
Thanks, Amber. And again, I've been out there as a triage doc, but, you know, I'm not getting that far out and seeing that operationalized, so just curious, thanks.
So looking at this that's being put forth, while it's not an action item, just informally, is this something, you know, as we look at kind of the different roles for our statutory committees at the Bureau, is this something that this committee would feel comfortable potentially supporting as a best practice? Even if it's just an informal support saying that this is, you know, these type of processes can help the overall EMS system?
Yes, I think to quote you, Gail, having some kind of standard, even if it requires, you know, continual refinement, is, is better than having no standard at all.
Thank you, Frank. Any other feedback from other committee members? So I hear one vote of support from Dr. Walter in terms of just an informal support of this moving forward. Anyone else would like to go on record?
I just want to clarify too, these, these are guidelines only, right, Josh and Amber? Obviously, there are going to be times when these can't be met. You know, I see goal time and that sort of thing. But, but again, these aren't protocols, these aren't that sort of thing, they're just guidelines, is that correct?
Yeah, there, there's no way to enforce any of this in reality. So I think really what has made it successful for us so far is the collaboration between the hospitals. So them having the actual buy-in in drafting this, I think, was helpful in getting them to, to sort of take a little bit of ownership of this process of EMS handoffs. And I think that's what's been really helpful for us. But yeah, I, there's not a real good way to enforce this, but it does help in having the conversations at the provider level. And it helps, you know, if this does have to escalate. So the built-in to the process is escalation. So if things aren't moving, the process would get escalated to the charge nurse and with some of the, you know, EMS leadership that's on shift that day. So it kind of just helps guide this in a more standardized way instead of having people, you know, arguing about offloads and things like that, so.
Right, it deconflicts professional-to-professional discussions regarding a specific patient. My only suggestion would be to change the last word on the title from plan to guidelines.
I will address that, maybe, there we go. So if you scroll down, Dr. Bradley, to the bottom of this, I'll give you some nationwide background for those of you that may not be as familiar with this across the country. So I want to be clear, this is a great thing. We don't really need it anymore, right? Because things are getting better, which is good. So all things come and go. I think as, Dr. Walter, you are very familiar, crisis standards of care, which this really is a crisis standard of care, is meant to be moved in and out of in a fluid and dynamic situation as your situation changes. So that's the intent of this document. The background is across the country, many EMS agencies are experiencing much worse offload times than perhaps we do, with average times in the three-to-six-hour range. Some of those agencies have chosen to take a rather dramatic approach to managing that to the extent of taking fold-up chairs and cots to the emergency department and leaving patients at those facilities on a fold-up chair or cot in the ambulance offload area. We really worked to avoid that down here in kind of the Southern Arizona region by partnering closely with the hospitals to come up with a plan to really address how to put the right patients where. It's important to note, there is still the possibility in this plan of leaving a patient at the facility if an offload time is not met. We left this in there on purpose. You can imagine if EMS agency has two ambulances and both ambulances are stuck at a hospital, that presents a very, very unsafe environment for that agency and the individuals who live in their response area. So we really focused on providing overall safety for our population. And if we do get to that 60-minute time period, the EMS supervisor will, of course, evaluate the situation and come up with a plan that may include leaving the patient at the facility.
Thank you, Josh and Frank. I think, you know, really that is one of the key pieces that when we look at what was done in Southern Arizona, what, the, what, the reason we would like to share this statewide is the collaboration between the hospital system and EMS. I think in, in developing something like this is really critical. What we found is everyone's in their silo, and we recognize that this pandemic going into year three is straining the entire healthcare system. But the more that each side can understand the, the different strains that the other side has and work together and come together in a collaborative fashion, I think that's been really beneficial. And so we really are just trying to share some of these best practices and make sure that people see what's going on in different parts of the state. This, this may not work in your area, but certainly, as Josh mentioned, the flexibility. So if we go back into a scenario where you have beds available every time an ambulance comes, obviously, it's a better situation to put that patient into a gurney in the hospital than a waiting room chair. But we wanted to have that flexibility out there. Licensing from ADHS has been a very active participation in these meetings as well. And I think, again, when we look at the collaboration, recognizing even within ADHS, when we've had individuals from licensing, as well as the Bureau of EMS and trauma system, that is critical to the process. So I won't belabor the point too much. I wanted to just bring these things forward and just, you know, make everyone aware that we really are trying to share some of these processes and see if that's something that the committee would support moving forward.
I understand and agree, and I'm supportive, as I said before. And obviously, differences are always best resolved with what's best for the patient. And then obviously too, as Josh alluded to, what's best for the community, right? So balancing all these different things and, so, thank you all.
Thank you. All right, if there is no further discussion, our next scheduled meeting is May 19th, 2022, at 12 o'clock PM. We will determine again closer to the event if that will be a hybrid or completely virtual meeting. If there is no further comments, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved, I do have a conflict that day. There's a statewide anthrax tabletop exercise from 0900 to 1630 that day. So I'll try to attend, but I'll probably have to be in and out. I don't know if there'll be conflicts for others. But I moved to adjourn.
Thank you very much. All right, can I get a second? Second. Thank you, all right, meeting is adjourned, thank you, everyone.